Want to call to order the meeting of the Board of Education. Murfreesboro Unit District 186. Nancy, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Here.
Mrs. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Runde?
Here. And Mr. Green, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Dismissed.
Alright, we need to approve the agenda. Mr. Grody, is there any changes? None? Need a motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry. Need to approve the consent agenda, which is District 186's regular board meeting minutes dated May the 16th, 2017, tri-county minutes dated May the 10th, 2017, tri-county bills for June of this year, applications and reports. And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need to discuss the, if there are any questions on District 186's bills for June? If you have any questions for Mrs. Bush? None? You got off lucky this one. We need a motion to approve then, the bills?
So moved.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor?
I'm not in a real call.
Oh, I'm sorry?
That's okay. Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Runde?
Yes. Communications, do we have any?
A few.
Few?
Just a little bit. Dear Mr. Grody and school board members, I am writing to inform you of my intent to take maternity leave with my second child. My intention is to start the school year until my due date September, until my due date of September 1st. I plan to return at the beginning of November barring any complications. I plan to use 42 paid workdays deducted from my accumulated sick leave. I will be in contact with Mrs. Ayers and the substitute teacher at the beginning of August to discuss the exact dates of my leave. Sincerely, Andrea Waddington.
Recommendations to approve? We have a recommendation to approve the maternity leave. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Dear Mr. Hupert, I am writing to offer my resignation from my aid position. I have accepted a job as a curator of the Dillon Home Museum up north and will be moving shortly. I want to tell you what an absolute pleasure it was working with you this last school year. I will dearly miss all of you at Carruthers and the kids so much. I hope you can find a wonderful aide for Mrs. Asa. She is an excellent teacher and I loved working with her this past year. Please let me know if there's anyone else with the district who I should notify of this matter. Very best regards, Erin Thompson.
We wish her well and recommend the approval.
We have a recommendation, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We do wish her well.
Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, please accept this letter as my intent to retire on June 30th, 2018, in accordance with the Teamsters contract. I have enjoyed my 20-plus years with the district. I have had the opportunity to work at Murfreesboro Middle School, the Maintenance Department, McElveen School, Murfreesboro High School, General John A. Logan Attendance Center, and the last several years at Carruthers. Sincerely, Paul Sages.
Recommendations to approve? Mr. Sages at the end of this?
Next year.
Yeah. It's coming up school year.
We have a recommendation, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like, sign, and we wish you well in retirement.
Dear Murfreesboro School Board members, I would like to request your approval to continue my graduate studies at SIU Carbondale for the summer 2017 semester by taking three classes toward an English as a second language teaching endorsement. The classes are CI 545, Teaching Literacy to Diverse Students, CI 402, Study of Cultural Diversity, and LING 570, TESOL, Methods and Materials. I would also like to request that 16 credit hours be applied toward my salary schedule for previously completed graduate coursework.
Who's that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sincerely, Katie Russell.
The recommendation is to approve.
We have a recommendation for the continued studies, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
You get it?
Mm-hmm.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Uh, just one more to add to it, I just want to notify the board that I will miss the July meeting. So... Okay, thank you. Any fishbowl items? I think we had a couple.
I have one. Uh, this is from Mr. Grody. Mr. Austin and Mr. Pugh held a second annual foundation golf outing on May 19th. I am pleased to announce, due to their hard work, with participation in the event doubling, they brought nearly 10,000 that will support our educational foundation, including the teacher grants program. We thank them for their service and look forward to next year's event.
I have one. This is from Thursday, May 18th, um, from Brian Manwray. When I was at the police department yesterday, the dispatcher informed me that earlier in the day, they had received a call from General Logan School on the 186 Emergency Channel about a suspicious vehicle. The dispatcher further said that as they were talking with the person from the school on the radio, the officers on duty heard the traffic and were already heading towards the school. The dispatcher shared the story with me because he wanted me to know that everything happened exactly as it should have happened and things worked out well. I just wanted to pass this story along and give a pat on the back to whoever at the general remembered exactly what to do in a situation such as this. Job well done. Thanks again, Brian Manwray.
Good. Any others? Okay. Freedom of Information Acts?
We had two. The National Association of Environmental Engineering Students, say Mr. Michael Timothy wanted information about our fleet of buses. We explained to him that we'd contract that out of less. And then our quarterly smart procureur FOIA that we have responded to numerous times and will continue to respond to, Gabrielle Moracella. We responded to both of them in a timely manner.
Any questions from the board? If not, we'll move to recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker will be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action by the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Do we first have any public concerns? Mrs. Geis?
Me?
I'm gonna ask you to come forward.
Alright.
In two things. Uh, no, keep coming. I'm gonna ask that you state your name first because this is being recorded. And second, I think I know what you're gonna talk about. The only thing I'll ask is don't mention any names of employees.
Yeah, okay. Um, my name is Andrea Geis. I'm the school social worker at Murfreesboro High School. Um, I'm gonna go really fast and I have a lot that I want to cover. If you gotta pull the hook out, drag me off, go right ahead.
We've got five minutes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna work it. Okay, um, real quick, about a dress code issue. On May 15th, I picked up my second grader from General John A. Logan, asked her how her day was. The first comment out of her mouth was, "I got in trouble today. I was told my shorts were too short and I should not wear them again." This is the outfit she was wearing. Think I sent it to the board members. This is the outfit. Um, so, I obviously, I came home and I emailed administration to voice my concerns about it. Last night, I, I got a call from, of, an administrator that explained...
Let me, let me just...
Okay.
You can go ahead and, and mention the names of the administrators that are present.
I emailed Mr. Grody and Mrs. Ayers. Uh, I got an email...
I just don't want somebody's name mentioned that's not here to defend himself.
I would not do that. Um, I got an email, May 16th, from Mr. Grody, um, saying he was sure Mrs. Ayers would handle it. I got a phone call last night from Mrs. Ayers saying that she did handle it. It had slipped her mind to return her phone call to me to let me know that she did address it and she was agreeing with me that this was inappropriate. Um, few issues related to this exact incident to my daughter. One, General John A. Logan does not have a dress code. Everything I received as a parent says it has to be weather appropriate and age appropriate and shoe appropriate, which that outfit is. Um, and even if her shorts were shorter and tighter, they were not inappropriate because she's seven. Um, so the next two days, I had to deal with my daughter, um, being devastated thinking she got in trouble, also saying, "It's because my legs are too long. It's because I'm too tall." Because if you don't know my daughter, she's about six inches taller than most of her friends. I mean, she's up to my shoulder. Um, I also had to tell her an adult was wrong, which is not a message I usually send to my daughter. She knows, she knows. She listens to people at school or she's in trouble. So she listens to people at school. Um, my other concern with that is if somebody did have a concern, they should have called me. I buy her clothes, I pick out her clothes. If there's a true concern, I should get a phone call. So, problems like this for other kids in the district. I worry about little girls or boys who are told things like this and go home and don't have the parents that are gonna say, "Sweetie, there's nothing wrong with you. That, that was just a misunderstanding. Don't worry about that. You're perfect just the way you are." Um, and maybe they start to believe, "Oh, God, my legs are too long. I'm too tall. I'm too this. I'm too fat. I'm too skinny. I'm too whatever." Um, I can tell you at the high school level, I work with lots of girls and boys with body images, that they can pinpoint the exact moment somebody told them they were fat or they were too tall or they were too skinny or they're too ugly or whatever. Um, that's not something I want my seven-year-old to deal with. That's not something I want my 17-year-old, when she's that age, to deal with. So even one time is a problem for me. Kind of a silver lining, I feel, for the school district is that it did happen to me, even though people that know me know dress code is kind of my thing. So it was a bad person for it to happen to, but if this would have happened to certain parents with children in the, in the school district, this would have been all over Facebook. It would have been all over Channel 3, Channel 12, Channel 6, Southern Illinois, Instagram, anything you could, because if you haven't noticed, you can't get on Yahoo or MSN without a body shaming story about some school doing something really stupid and got a lot of bad press from it. And I don't want that attached to the place I work, the place my kids go to school, where I'm from. I'm not okay with that. So, I'm, I'm getting there. Problems with dress codes in general. I think they're very arbitrary and subjective. What is okay with one person might not be okay with the next, and I think that's okay. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Um, I don't know if we just do things because we've always done them, but like shorts mid-thigh, shorts three inches above the knee. Where are we coming up with this? Why are our thighs offensive? Like, are shoulders offensive? I'm, I'm not sure. Um, and while on paper, I know there's been some talk that it seems like the policies are equal between boys and girls. It may look like that, but I can tell you in reality, it's not. Yes, if a boy has a hat on or his pants are sagging, which is not even like that popular anymore for kids, um, it takes two seconds. Give me your hat, pull your pants up. If a girl has a taint up on, a bra strap showing too much cleavage, shorts are too short, dress is too short, um, maybe they think she's too big for the form-fitted outfit she's wearing. That girl then comes to the office, tries, "Miss Geis, do you have any clothes I can put on?" If I don't, then they have to make a phone call. A parent might not be able to bring clothes. You can talk to one to two hours out of class when, why? Why are they out of class? It's not a distraction, okay? Um, and it's not fair even between girls, because my daughter, she's very tall. Someone else could wear the same exact shorts and shirt and they could be down to here. So in between girls, maybe with a bigger bottom or a bigger chest, um, it's not equal. Last one, or two more. Large majority of men I work with feel very uncomfortable going up, at least to the high school, girls saying, "Hey, um, your shorts are too short. Your shirt's cut too low. I can see your bra strap." So then they find female employees to say, "Can you go talk to them?" And I get it, it's awkward, because they're gonna look like a creep when they go up to the 17-year-old girl and say, "Sweetie, you have too much cleavage." The girl's gonna think, "Why are you looking at my cleavage? You're my teacher." Okay? So I get it. I feel awkward too, and I don't feel comfortable doing it. Uh, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Allemeyer and myself, I feel like we're a really good team and we try to keep, we, we do the best we can. Um, though with policies on papers, we can't fight that. We, so I think some policies need to change. Um, and then, you know, we tell kids forever, "It's not what you look like, it's what you are inside." But then somewhere around sixth grade, it switches and it's very much what you look like and it's what you have on. And if you wear something, that means you're something. And I disagree with that whole idea. Um, I'm not anti-dress codes, I'm not. Um, I don't think a kid should come with a marijuana leaf or a Budweiser shirt on. Um, but at the same time, you can look through yearbooks from Murfreesboro High School since the beginning of Murfreesboro High School, and in the 60s, you're gonna see many dresses up to here. And in the 70s, you're gonna see guys wearing shorts up to here. Just checking out. 70s, I mean, every generation in the 90s, we got the whole baggy thing going, so then baggy was bad. Um, but I just feel like there's a lot of smart people in this district and we can make good decisions that are fair to everybody and clearly not sexist against girls. Um, and I'd much rather work in a building where maybe a bigger girl could wear something form-fitted and she's comfortable doing that, or a skinny girl can wear something that they think, "Oh, you don't have the curves for that." I'd, I'd much rather work with kids being comfortable with their bodies than following this kind of subjective dress code. Did I make it? I was closing?
I wasn't timing. You did very well.
That's, that's...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody wanna, any comments?
I think, uh, two things. One is when she said that, uh, Ms. Ayers confirmed that this was inappropriate, you were referring to the, the statement made by the staff member was inappropriate, not that Ms. Ayers was saying the outfits. I think we all agreed that the picture was not inappropriate. So, I just wanted to make sure that the inappropriate remark was to the right thing. And then I think we also, uh, when we talk about our, our handbook and our building management plans, I think this year we might need to look at our dress code. The last time we really looked at our dress code, if you remember, those of you that have been on the board for a while, middle school and hoodies, as I think, I think that was the last big issue that we really did look at with the dress code. And Annette called me this week asking about the building management plans and brought up the, the, um, how it's different for girls versus boys. And so, uh, we do have a parent advisory committee that needs to get started and that's gonna be later on, but yeah, it's definitely something we're gonna have to address.
Alright. That was, that was gonna be my suggestion, so thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Geis. Uh, any other public concerns? Employee concerns? None? Okay, thank you all for coming. Moving to old business. Yeah. Please tell me, you've got some good news on financial updates?
No.
I was just hoping maybe something happened.
You know what? It's, it's not horrendous news and I, I, I've come to the, to the conclusion that really this is a political update. This is no longer about finances. This is about grown people that are more concerned with who gets the credit for giving us a budget versus us actually getting a budget. And I can't express how frustrated I am with that fact. But, it is. Um, I'm gonna try and stick to the facts and, and leave my beliefs on, on the side, but that's also very hard. I will say that this Thursday, the IEA, I talked to Melinda. Melinda is, and who else is going with you, Melinda?
Katie Russell.
Katie Russell are going to talk to the, um, the IEA asked Murphys teachers to testify at the Illinois House Appropriations. Talking with Melinda before this meeting, the main message is going to be that, um, an appropriations bill is not acceptable. We can't continue to just have K-12 funding and not have higher ed being funded or our social services being funded at some point. Uh, our state needs a budget, because we might be able to keep the doors open with appropriations, but at what cost? It's just getting to the point where it's ridiculous. Um, next week, Tuesday, the 27th, at 5:30, um, the doors will open at the Harrisburg Middle School. I would recommend as many people that can go, go. Har- Har- Uh, June 27th, it's the Tuesday next week. Last year, the year before, I couldn't remember, Andy Minar came down and talked about school funding, and we had some people that attended that and it was a good, um, opportunity to do that. They're gonna talk about all the facts between, behind Senate Bill 1.
Are you headed down there?
I, I'm planning on it, yes.
Well, I think, can anybody that wants to go contact you?
Sure.
Because rather than driving several cars, we can carpool it.
And I did post this on our, I tweeted it out.
And that, and that goes out to the, the MEA too. I mean, there's no sense...
I'm sure we'll have a, I'm sure we'll put someone there.
Senate Bill 1 is that evidence-based funding, funding, I think everybody has read the articles about tomorrow and that they're going back to the, the rounders called them back into session. There is a Medicaid lawsuit out there, and if the state has to start paying those, that's gonna come out of the revenue. And again, this goes back to, I, I've said this a few times, we had, in FY16, we had four categorical payments. In FY17, we had two categorical payments. So in FY18, you can draw a linear line, four to, my concern is without a budget, without a revenue increase, we're gonna have zero. Um, my question to this board, it might sound a little radical, but if we get an appropriations, at what point do we say this isn't appropriate? I mean, we can, we could open with an appropriations, we could last the year with an appropriations and hope that we can make ends meet, that they'll have enough revenue to give it to us. But I think that if they, if they do that, schools need to stand together and say, "You know what? Higher ed's too important, social services is too important. We need to not open." Because to open school and then not get the money in and possibly have to close for a while and then restart, it'd be easier to just say, "You know what? Give us a budget and we'll start the school year when you give us a budget." Um, I hate to say it's gonna take that kind of crazy to get this done. I'm really optimistic that by the 30th, there'll be something going to the governor's desk to be signed, that we will have our first budget in three years. Um, closing school is a serious question, a serious consideration, something that is gonna need some discussions. You know, if we don't get anything, we could make it till, what, we're hoping, November with tax anticipation warrants. If we get an appropriations, we're hoping to make it through the year, depending on the revenue and how much money they can give us. But the bottom line is, is that's not acceptable. It's not appropriate. We shouldn't be dealing with this situation. So at what point do we try and get with all the other schools and say, "That's enough. We need a budget." And would you wanna jump off that cliff and draw that line in the...
That'd be a hard cliff to jump off.
Yes, it would.
But that's how politicians respond.
Yeah, I guess that, I mean, I think, when we're talking, I mean, you're right, you wouldn't, not just be Murfreesboro, we would have to have every school...
It has to be every school. It's not gonna just be one or two.
Doing that.
Yeah.
And then, I think you'd have to have so many community meetings with parents, you know, to kind of get that feedback. I mean, we're...
It'd be very much like trying to pass county facility sales tax.
I think it'd be even worse than that. I'd rather pass three more of those, but...
I think you'd have a lot of angry parents too, who, who, what are they gonna do with their children and if school's not open?
Well, what about, but now, I mean, we're, we're talking about staff not being paid because we don't, if we're saying no to a budget, they're gonna pay us anyway.
You'd still have to contract, you'd still have to legally pay your staff.
Then I think the state could say that we have to legally open.
Well, I'm not saying that we would not say that you guys would say, "Well, we'll just adjust our calendar. We'll get our 185 days in." You know, you just, you, you can adjust the calendar for a different start date. Just gotta get it done by June 30th.
And I'm not saying I'm totally against that slippery slope that you start going down, when you start trying to play politics with the kids.
The problem is that when us superintendents are sitting there, we're starting to have these conversations, and I'm the crazy one that kind of brings up this kind of radical behavior, but by the 30th, if they don't give us a budget, they're not going to give us a budget unless we do something radical. And all my other superintendents are, are looking at the political side going, "Oh, oh, it's kind of..." And so I get it, we're gonna need to build a coalition. And so I'm just bringing it out there, how badly do you hate the idea? Do I start to try and talk to other districts? There's 70% of the districts in Illinois are dependent on general state aid. You know, with the rep, without having tax increases, you're, you're going to be prorated. They can prorate you through not giving you the categoricals, or they can prorate you by not giving you all your general state aid, but 70% of the districts are being prorated because the state doesn't have the revenue. There's got to be the people going to Thursday, the people going to Tuesday, that, you know, we can start having sidebar conversations about, "We're thinking about doing this," and seeing who else would be in.
If you think about it, they're, they're bullies and you, you have to get their attention by threatening their job, which would be negative press. And if we could do something that would be like backing up our start date, just to make them look bad, it could. Because think about what it should be, you know, the big picture. That's what would, would have to be, our minds would have to be wrapped around what, what should be happening for our kids and our teachers and what we're losing. You know what I mean? That mindset for us to go that route.
There definitely needs to be a better communication on the school side, because the politicians got up last year and said, "We're fully funding general state aid." Yay, yes.
Well, and that's...
And then how much did we lose on categoricals and that message didn't get out there? I mean, there's gotta be a message that, no, they're playing the shell game. They actually shorted this district more money by not giving us categoricals than they did when they prorated general state aid. So they're getting this credit for all they're doing for K through 12, and they really didn't do anything.
And that's, that's part of getting it out there with the, the media.
And I mean, realistically, the two things, I don't know how true it is, but you know, the chest puffing and pumping, saying that they're not passing a appropriations bill this year, they're going for a state budget. So I mean, if that doesn't happen, we're not gonna have a choice. We're not gonna make it till Christmas with the funds we have if we don't get anything. We're gonna have to close by then, if we're able to start on time at all, depending on what our revenue is.
Well, if we can start, it, it depends.
I mean, are we the same as last year?
We're basically the same situation, are we?
We got maybe till Thanksgiving or a little after, and then we take a break till we get money.
And it always depends, we get our property taxes in. You know, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that the county clerk has been working on, um, working on getting an extension out, which is earlier than it's been in a while, because the, we didn't get our first payment until October 4th last year. But if they can get it out now, we might get it a little bit earlier. But that's still a long time to go without your, you know, general state aid payments are supposed to start coming in in August, so realistically, we would have gotten four GSA payments, you know, by the time we got our state, our first property tax payment last year.
And then with the budget crisis the way it is, that affects borrowing, and I mean, we're at junk status.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
You know, and you look at, try to borrow.
We can always do tax anticipation warrants, but it's just really unfair that districts have to do that at a cost of interest to them, when the state just refuses, and the interest that's racking up that they're paying every day. What did I tell you, they're paying like 12 or 13% interest, was it 12%?
Seven to nine percent is what I've been hearing.
So you have big contractors, ET Simons, that the state owes $20 million, they don't really care right now if they get their money, because they're making so much more money in interest than they could invest in it anywhere else. So there, there are those that don't care. We can't afford that.
Without a budget, revenue is at best flat. You know, but really, we're losing business, we're losing people, so revenue's declining. And so, you know, without a budget, we're going to be prorated, and then with the interest that they have to pay to these other companies, even if they do make those payments, it comes out of the money that comes to us, it's just, it's a, and I, you know, the first step would be trying to get other school districts that are in the same boat and talking about it, but I think we need to reach out to higher ed, we need to reach out to the social services and things to, to just express the need for a budget. We can't be the only ones that are saying we need a budget. I mean, and I think that, the only thing to get them done is to do something absolutely drastic.
We're working with lost jobs, we've cut programs, you know, loss of everything that we have, and there's people that are upset, there's families that have been struggling because of it, the students are obviously not getting what they deserve. It's crap.
My concern would be, you know, you're using essentially the education system, our children as a bargaining chip, to make a stance. And by making that stance, and Springfield has already ran through, because that's the only chip you have to play, is, okay, here's our line in the sand, we're not going to open up. So they've obviously discussed it, and there's probably something setting on the back burner of a stopgap, a, you know, throw you a bone, get you through another nine months, whatever the case may be, and obviously with our hands out, begging for money, we're going to take anything we can take, because at that point, they say, okay, we'll, we'll get you enough to get you through this school year, and we're not going to say no to that, but that doesn't do anything, has anything to do with the budget, because there's still too many pieces of pie needed to put the budget together.
Aren't they using the children and education and the entire state as a bargain? You know, and so, what I'm saying is, I still want to educate the kids, I just don't want to start the school year with their lack of leadership to then have to have this huge gamble around Christmas and deal with, with all the unknowns. I'd rather just say, you know what, you know, almost like we're on strike.
But I'm saying, you.
Give us a budget, or we're not going to serve.
But you're saying, give us a budget, what I'm saying is, if they come through and say, we'll get you through this, we'll get you enough money to get you through this school year, then that, that's enough to shut us up.
My concern is that, when they do that, and they, they promise that, they, they've shown us time and time again that they can promise money left and right, actually giving us the check doesn't happen. And so they can, they can say they're going to have 250 million into the Senate Bill 1.
And it's presumptive they'll do that.
Couldn't they come in and redraw the district lines and say, you guys can't obviously run your district, and you're no longer, now you are with Carbondale, or now you're with, you know, can't they do that if we don't open?
I guess if push comes to shove, what we would have to do is work backwards, on a June 30th end of school date, and no spring break, and no whatever, what date could we get to? What date, I could, you know, could we start school in January and get our 185 days in? Could that work? We'd have to, because they would not be able to say, as long as we keep submitting in calendars with a different start date that meet their requirements, we're not educating, and we're just adjusting our calendar, waiting for a budget.
But to answer Mrs. Dorr's question, we're not going to do this by ourselves.
No, it has to be Murphy's.
Every district, every district.
But it won't be ever this time.
It will be.
The Carterville's not going to do it. No, Carterville's not going to do it, Marion's not going to do it, Mount Vernon's not going to do it. So.
I mean.
Carterville might, because they're not in better shape than we are.
Carbondale wouldn't, Marion wouldn't. But the 70% of the districts, and if you can get a majority of the 70, I don't know. You have to pick enough districts, get enough of the, you know, getting everybody down here, that only affects Terry Bryan and Paul Scheffler.
You're going to have to see the Chicago Public Schools do that, before I think it's going to get enough people's attention.
And they threaten to do that every year.
Well, I'm actually, if, by June 30th, I think this discussion's going to come to the floor, because there's a lot of superintendents that are discussing it, and so if it does get talked about, Murphysboro's kind of on the fence, doesn't know what it wants to do, sees the logic both ways, hates that we're in the situation that would put us to this, is that inaccurate representation?
How much of that discussion of getting, you know, rallying the troops together to say, look, we will do this, 70% of downstate, or downstate schools will do this, if CPS will jump on board, and if they do, how much is that us just essentially pushing the, the agenda forward them, to get the funding formula that they want?
That CPS wants?
Yeah. Because if, if you get in that, where now you're on their team because everybody's, because you need them, if you're going to go to the bully pulpit, and you're going to say, this is what we're going to do, and they're going to be with us, then they're going to be the ones leading us, because without them, we're pretty weak.
CPS and U46, that's Aljin, which is the second largest district in Illinois, U46, both of those are more like us than the collar counties. And so when they start looking at this funding formula, you got to remember, Chicago's more in our boat than they are, it's the collar counties with the property-rich districts that they serve sushi and everything. CPS has its issues with mismanagement, I'm not saying they're a great organization. But the, I don't think Senate Bill 1, except for the pension parity issue, favors Chicago that much. And when I say pension parity, I want it also to be known that the bailout, I want it expressed by both sides, because one side calls it the pension parity, the other side calls it the bailout.
It's hard for me to say, I mean, I wouldn't rule it out, it's hard for me to say, I would agree to that, because I feel like you have to talk to your community before I can say, sure, sign me up for postponing school, and I don't know that you have time to do that, you know, I mean, we're not, we don't have time to hold a town meeting, town hall meeting tomorrow night, kind of thing. I just think there's a lot of caveats in all of that.
It'd be hard to get community support, too, and like you said, you think about having three kids, and now what?
My fear is, is that's exactly what Governor Rowner and Representative Madigan are counting on.
But I think you would have parents then, that would send their children to private schools, and they won't come back to the district.
I 100% agree with that. We would be doing.
They don't have enough, they don't have enough of those in the jury.
No, but I mean, for some, it's not even.
I mean, it's obvious that they don't, they, they know the bluffs for the last, going on three years. This state's got used to not having a budget, the troops get rallied, and nothing gets done, because the same people, they know they're going to get reelected, they know everything, they can just lie to everybody and say how they fully fund everything, and then everybody shuts up about it for this school year, now we're at June 30th again, and we're going to talk about it again, they're going to give us a stopgap budget, and everybody's going to shut up for the next 12 months, and they're going to kick their can down the road again. But they've got to a point where they're not going to have any money to give a stopgap, they're going to promise us all this money, and where's it at? You can only pay your Visa with your MasterCard so long, and then you run out. And who's going to give you a loan? I know if you come to me, file bankruptcy three times at my job, you're not given one, and that's where the state's at. You can't borrow, you're not going to borrow anymore. I mean, we're to a point where we're not going to have a discussion for a political statement, it's going to be, we're going to close because we can't pay the bills.
Yeah. And I think, bottom line, this warrants discussion, we have to, because you're right, they, they know we're just going to shut up, and they're going to get.
You know, last year, they gave K through 12 a year, and they threw some on higher ed till the end of the year, and everything was great. But they didn't have the money to pay for that when they did. I mean, you're, they're going to have, and everybody, like you said, wants credit, and I don't care what side of the aisle you're on, both of them want credit, and nobody wants the other side to get credit, so they're playing games with our kids, our people that need social services, and everybody else, and, I mean, that's where we're at, and that's where it's going to be.
I think we know the issue, so it'll be interesting the next couple weeks.
So we're going to continue to just hope that the state will do what's right, and that we'll make ends meet.
Okay. Registration updates.
Yeah, you have a handout at your desk, I believe, for your locations, the numbers are relatively unchanged. I do need to say that Allison Sabanda met with me today, representing General Johnny Logan, in first grade specifically. As you can see, kindergarten has seven sections currently, second grade has seven sections currently, and first grade has six sections currently. And so we discussed the need for another first grade classroom, we discussed the financial issues that we are in. And so I promised her that I would mention, that she came, and she said we need another first grade teacher, and that I said that I don't know if we're going to be able to afford that right now, that, and she understood that, but she wanted it brought up, and so. She was going to come here and speak to you all, but I, I could.
Well, again, I think we're all aware of that, and we've always strived to keep the.
And I totally heard that that's where you guys are at as well.
Yeah, keep the class sizes low, but you can do what you, you can only do what you can do.
At the risk of her coming after me afterwards, after the meeting, is it possible to move a second grade teacher to first grade? Is my math right, that we'd have 22 in second grade then?
You, I mean, it's, anything's possible, and if you move them, they'd be down there, what we got to do is watch the numbers, because these numbers aren't firm, they're going to change. And we talked a little bit about that, there's also 116 right now in kindergarten, which if you moved them down to six right now, if they don't get anybody else in, which is a far cry, I'm not saying we're moving a kindergarten person, was that clear? What I'm saying, though, is you can get that down to 19 in a class, you know, and.
Yeah, we know we're going to get more kindergarten, so I don't even think.
Well, and I, you know, the numbers are going to change for all of them, and so we are watching it, we are hoping that by the 30th, we have a budget, because that will change a lot of things, too, when you start looking at what the revenue stream the state's projecting, so.
Very good. All right. Updates on the summer projects?
Yeah, we, the football field, and Heartland Turf, I believe is the name of the company, they, they've helped us kill it off, and now we've sprained it with Bermuda. The auditorium is down, if you haven't driven by it, the front of the building is quite different. Carpet is in kindergarten, which was installed last year, it was installed poorly, and there were seams, it got fixed this week, and by the end of Friday, it's going to get fixed again, because the repairs to the repairs are unacceptable. However, they're going to come out, and they're going to make that right, that's not costing us anything, this is just still the, we're holding still half the bill from last year's summer work that they did, we had to pay them.
Who's the contractor?
That would have been distinctive. The plaster repairs at the middle school outside, and outside of General Johnny Logan, where the gutter's getting fixed, the drive-in is, is fixed, and so that's not going to crumble anymore. And the inside of the middle school, where we had those drainage issues, and the walls were falling apart, we've had that plaster replaced, painting is happening, it's all going well. We have a, a goal at the end of this summer to have our help desk tickets completely done, and we've been actively pursuing a lot of those, knowing that the county facility sales tax is coming online, and talking to the teachers as to what needs to happen in their buildings, we've been responsive to that, so.
How much of a backlog of the help tickets are there?
There, there are some that have just been there for a ridiculously long time, but it's been a lot of small things, and so it's like the, every job ends up being kind of like the carpet, where it gets done, but you don't want to close it out, because it's not done adequately, and you need to bring back the company to redo it. And so we're in the 60s to 70s, as far as district-wide of, of open tickets.
That seems like a lot.
So if we get a clean slate, is there, is there a policy to be put in place to ensure that we don't build those up again?
That's going to depend on the budget, and, and they will get built up at the beginning of every school year, you know, the teachers come back to their rooms and they add things to the help desk. We actually talked district-wide about, we do spring orders or summer orders, the teachers have to put in their things, and so we also want to have a head start on the stuff for the summer, because a lot of the stuff does need to be scheduled and planned out, and found a bid, and do all that stuff, and so we want to get those earlier. So no, there's no real policy to, is sure that we're not going to have them, but we are keeping our eye on it, being fiscally responsible, and still trying to move the needle, so.
Just one request, just one request.
Yes, sir.
When we had our building meetings with each building and the staff, and they were giving us a list of things that they would like to see done, can you give a report back to each school on items that have been checked off that list this summer?
Yeah.
And some of them we knew we could do very quickly.
Yeah, the end of the year, that facility, my faculty forums, at the end of the year, I kind of reviewed everything that they had brought up, and what had been done, and what had been pushed off, and what hasn't been. And as we start the school year, I think the first one would be a review of all the help desk tickets and what they have, and hopefully it'll be a clean slate, and we can add to them. There's a, we finally got a, a company that we really liked, the partitions, and I was at the high school, they're black partitions, so you can't really write on them, they're, what's the term for when you sand them, it's all the way through?
They're phenolic.
They're phenolic, which means when you sand them, if someone does write on them and you sand them, they are the same color all the way through, so you don't have to repaint them. And the hinges, I was at the high school, and I actually hung on the door, and the hinges held up nicely, and if they lock them, you can lift it up and it opens easily. So I think we found the right stalls, and we're trying to slowly get those in all of our buildings.
Even though our superintendent does that, we do not honor anyone else's attempt at being done.
We know they're going to do this, so we have, you know, so it's not a bad.
We've discussed, because one of the problems is, is when a stall door gets broken, you got to find the stall door manufacturer and get the right hinge, and if we add all the same doors, we could have hinges on stock, and things could get fixed that much quicker. So it's, like, it's one of the policies we're trying to do, is make sure that all of our flush valves are the same, Sloans, and all of our doors are the same, and we're, we're trying to get smarter that way.
Right. So we have something set up where each principal has a, a list given of, of needs throughout the summer that need to be fixed for their facility?
We have a help desk, so like, if you've got a technological issue or a maintenance issue, you can go onto the help desk and you can submit a, an issue or a card.
What if, what if we did, and maybe I'm wrong for this, but this is just something I, I feel strongly about, a, a list for, you know, the principal at the high school, middle school, all the schools, and also the athletic director for the, the fields, a list given, and then maybe every month, brought to the board, a checklist to see what's getting done, you know what I mean? So, because I mean, it's been a long-term kind of deal we've been dealing with here, with cut grass, et cetera, et cetera. And I just think that might.
I can, I can put this on to the next thing, I can get a presentation of what's been done so far. The concern with, with every building principal wants their building done.
Sure.
And so I'd rather do it as a district-wide thing instead of, because, I mean, every building principal's going to tell you everything that needs to be done in the building, we have to prioritize that.
I do feel like there's probably some things that can go to this, but I know, like, general, last year, there was like a water fountain that was down for a while, I mean, months.
The whole year.
So, see, there's stuff like that, where it's like, well, I understand why, this is not time for this to be fixed, but a water fountain for the, you know, that section of the grade school, why can't we get that done now?
There's a stop sign at the high school that you can't tell is a stop sign, and I wouldn't want a wreck at that intersection, the kind of lawsuit that we would face, because.
Which intersection is that?
It's the.
Is it red or?
It's going towards 14, 16th Street, the sign is faded light, and, I mean, you could argue, a lawyer could argue, well, it doesn't say stop, it's not red, you know, my client didn't need a stop. And then I, I think there's some graffiti drawn on one that's at the entrance of that, that, that next stop sign where the speed bump used to be, I'm not going to go into details of what kind of genitalia it is, but there's definitely genitalia written on it. And then I think there's also a lot of where the grass is, stumps that keep cars from going into the grass, those have been, I think, yanked out, or, you know, pulled out and stuff like that. Those are pretty much ready items, I think, top of, you know, top of the list type things.
I think you're talking, actually, John, about two different things.
Am I?
Yeah, well, we had meetings with each building.
Okay.
When we, when we understood and knew that the facility's tax was approved, to kind of get their wish list.
Okay.
And there was a bunch of things that were listed, and that's what I was asking, if we could get a report back from that, that some of those things that are going to be done, and have been done this summer.
Okay.
So that the faculty and the staff knows that we heard exactly what they were saying, and we're going through the list. Can we get to all the top, the A-list with every school right now? No, just because of the money, but there's, there's some Cs and some Bs that we can knock off the list, just because they were pretty easy. So that was, that was where I was headed with that.
Okay, good, well, I'm glad I brought up this one, because that was a different thing. Because I think the county, it's free to get stop signs, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, I don't know that the stop signs are our responsibility to maintain.
The one on Harry Ray is, is ours, and we signed an agreement with the police, because there was issues where they couldn't write tickets at it, so you could run that stop sign and the police couldn't write the tickets, because it was, it's on our property, it's our sign, and so we have an intergovernmental agreement that allows them to write tickets at that stop sign now.
Yes.
So for the tickets, though, for grass, didn't we decide that there weren't going to be tickets anymore, that there was going to be like a set schedule, and grass was just going to get mowed, so that's not going to be an issue anymore, right? Open tickets for getting the grass mowed?
The, yeah, I'm reluctant to say it's not going to be an issue anymore, because if it is an issue, we'll deal with it, but yeah, that is the plan to, to move forward and not have those issues. But right now, we've got a, what is it called, the batwing is what I call it, the large mower, the finish mower. That does the, it, it's currently down, and we need to get that one probably rebuilt or, or fixed.
Replaced.
Yeah.
We're going to have to replace it, because it's not, it's, I don't think it's the same with the.
So doing the fields without that, that big finish mower, so some of those things need to be done, too.
As far as things on the help, that's a help ticket, though, you told me there's a process that people who call that in are notified when things are fixed, right?
Yes.
Is that.
Whenever they're updated, they're fixed.
Is that a report that can be generated for us?
I don't know about a report. I can, I'll put together a presentation for next month.
Just, I didn't know.
As far as the number of the tickets.
A few clicks and print it out and get it to...
All right. Thank you. Hey, the approval of the title plan, which is enclosure number one in your packet?
Yes, and this is, I guess, the second reading. There were some questions that were added to the Iwas document. I do ask that you approve this as presented, knowing that it's going to come back with changes. Ms. Dorr and I, she did a lot of good editing with my first draft. I write in a passive voice, and I need to get back to my master's level writing skills with more of an active voice. But she's going to look over the new questions for me, and we will get that entered into Iwas, and then they will send it back for changes.
So we have a recommendation to approve the title plan as presented. Is there any questions from the board?
I have one question. On the restorative, mentioned restorative justice programs, should that be practices, or do you have a program?
Probably practices.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve. And a second? All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carried, and I would like to thank Mrs. Dorr for her help on that. There's a lot of work involved. Well, thank you. The approval of press policy number 94.
Yeah, and this is the second reading of this, and I did get a question from a board member, and so basically, just to review for everybody, when the press policy changes come in, Nancy and I review them. We read them. We talk about what we actually do, and why is it changing, what is it changing to, and what would be the best, when they give you those options, what would be the best changes in our things. Or, a lot of them are just language changes, to update with the new law, and so you'll see a little okay on it. And that is, you know, it doesn't really change what we're doing, they're just updating the stuff. Then, with the first reading, you guys get to read it, and then you can ask questions on any of those things that Nancy and I have kind of okayed and cleared. And then with the second reading, we approve it with any edits that you might have on those. So that's the process, and with this being the second reading, I recommend that we approve as presented.
We have a recommendation for the approval as presented of the press policy number 94. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Opposed?
Motion carried. The approval of the student-parent handbook.
Yeah, and this is the more technical of the documents, that reads more like the policy manual. The next item's going to be the building management plans, which are a little bit more specific and building-specific. As I said before, I, right now, I've got a list of things that need to be addressed, probably over the course of this next year through what I would think would be the parent advisory committee. We need to, we need to review and update our wellness policy. It's been a long time, longer than even the hoodies, for us to look at the wellness policy. We have to bring up the dress code, as brought up tonight, and review that. Discipline actually goes in that, too.
You look more likely to discipline than...
This is a guy with his hands and...
I believe that was the intention.
Put me on the discipline.
That was the one we needed on the past. So, then Mr. Hungy made that recommendation, I'm sure.
Well, thanks. Thank you.
Given the fact that we do know that we're going to need to work on our wellness policy, our dress code, our PTO engagements through the parent advisory committee, for registration and for parents to start getting, you know, what we do have, I recommend that we approve the student-parent handbook as presented.
Very good.
I had some questions about the high school. I brought it up to you, about being in compliance with SB 100 as far as the...
Yeah, and you were looking at the discipline and whether or not, because it explains the progress. So like, if you do this, then you get suspended. If you do this again, then you get outlawed. And it being kind of prescriptive there, something that we will, over the course of the year, possibly change as we look more into restored, our restorative practices are just starting. We're not exactly cutting edge on that one, so.
It doesn't give like, to this, to this. It says specifically what it's going to be, and if X isn't supposed to equal Y, then I don't know that that's in compliance.
At the elementaries, I believe it's just a two-sentence thing that says it needs to be appropriate and be reasonable.
Right. But I mean, if we're going to be amending it, I mean, couldn't we just make those amendments before the start of school?
I would want to go through a process where we include more people in the discussions on that. I think that, you know, when we get into the dress code, there has been some conversations about uniforms. And I don't know where I stand completely on uniforms. I know life would be a lot easier in many respects with uniforms and schools that do that. You know, so there's options of where do you go, and I don't want to just make changes without having a thorough discussion with it.
But I mean, if you're asking us to approve it as is, I don't know. I think for me, dress code, it represents often gender bias and racial and cultural bias. And so I think if it's going to be looked into before we approve it, it should, we should look into it. And same with the disciplinary action at the high school, make sure it's in compliance.
And I guess what I'm saying is, is I understand it's not perfect, and what I'd like to do is get it approved so that we can hand it out to the parents for registration and to get the year going. And then over the course of the year, make the modifications and the changes.
Are you going to add something that says that we're looking at this, and this could...
I can add a statement that does that, yeah.
You would see that we have time to make those revisions before August rolls around? Like, table this for now, and then make those revisions.
I don't know how much time the budget and all the grant writing and all the other stuff's going to be. I mean, it's going to be kind of a crazy summer, so I don't know if we'll have time to do it right. I mean...
You too comfortable with the statement being added?
Will a timeline be given, or will we just say that we're going to look at, are you going to give a date? Do you have any idea?
I was thinking that we would start it in September, when the parents get back into school, because then you can reach out to the PTOs and you can get, it's easier to get input that way. Change it by December. And I'm going by the last time we had the hoodie discussion. I mean, the discussions, they take a lot of time. And there's a lot of interesting points and good points brought up on both sides of the issue. And so I don't want to try and short-sight it or to not give it the proper space that it's deserving, so.
And isn't there like a no yoga pants or something rule at the junior high?
There...
Then not, you're not going to send her home in March? That could be very confusing.
I don't think we could change a policy mid-year. But I also don't think we could come up with the policy and give it the time necessary within a month or so.
When do these go?
When people start buying their clothes, you know, it'd be good to know what the policy is, so.
Well, sometimes it's not because they're out buying clothes, it's just because that's what they have to wear.
Most complicated things.
Well, it's quite obvious that it has to be looked at, since we haven't discussed it since the hoodie issue. So I don't want to rush into it either. I think we need to make it right. So I worry about trying to get it done in a month or two, and it not be right, and we have to readdress this issue again. I would rather see us go ahead and approve it with the stipulation, it is going to be looked at and revised with implementation beginning of next school year. I think we need to get it right the first time.
I agree that we need to get it right, but also, I mean, I hate to go another year and have another child that's seven be told her shorts are too short, too.
What about an enforcement?
The problem with that one is, is that there was no violation, because the dress code for the seven-year-old was not violated. So that was not a handbook or building management plan.
That was personnel.
Issue, that was a personnel issue, which was, you know, I mean...
Well, and then, on this, you're talking about beginning of the year, due to the parent advisory committee to have some input. And I think part of the criticism before with some of the decisions that have been made years past, and it's been kind of rammed down your throat with no community involvement. And I think if we make a rash decision on changing this in a month or two with no community involvement, we're falling back down into that, you know, like the criticism was with attendance centers over the years and everything else, that there's not enough time for public input if we do it. You know, these got to be to the printer to hand out it. You know, we only have a few weeks to get this done. And you're not, summer vacations, employees are out, you don't have enough time to get all the stakeholders to have input on how this is going to change.
By the same token, I would be concerned if we changed the middle school and the high school dress code to be similar to the primary building, which is, you know, be appropriate and be reasonable. Because it does need to be more defined, I think. Because it does become an issue. It's a cultural change that you're really looking at there, is to...
If it takes longer, then what if we got into the enforcement part of it? Is, are all teachers A's, everybody allowed to enforce it at every school?
They are, of course, allowed to enforce it. The problem really comes with, you know, what do you do? Is it, you're an administrator, and someone gets sent to you seventh period, and they've made it through the entire day, and all these other teachers, no one sent them to you. You know, and it's, it's not been brought to your attention, and so now it's seventh period. I don't think my administrators would be calling anybody and sending them home at that point. They'd say, you know, this, you go back to class.
But something like what happened with Miss Gaius is, if it's called out by person A, but then person B makes the call, yes, this is appropriate, no, it's not, you know, then we have the enforcement at one person.
As presented, but we, do we want to add the stipulation of reviewing it?
So there's a change.
The statement that it's going to be changed.
Yeah, I think that what needs to happen is, is I will write a letter that will go on the cover of the parent-student handbook, and on the covers of the building management plan that basically says that we are going to be starting a parent advisory committee, and we will be looking into wellness, dress code, discipline, PTO engagement. And...
I think that's...
Over the course of the year, and these policies or these practices are going to be examined, and we would love your involvement. Might actually give people cause to...
All right, the approval of building management plans?
And I would say that that's the same thing with the letter explaining.
Okay. So we have the recommendation to approve as presented with the letter added. Do we have a motion to approve? Moving it up from 7:00. I think, unless somebody wants to change dates, we always have the third Tuesday of every month. Is anybody willing to entertain or talk about moving the time to 6:30, 6:00?
I'm in favor of moving it up.
Okay. And I know Mrs. Miller probably has the longest drive. Does anybody else get off late?
You're driving from... I'm usually off at like 5:00 or 5:30.
I just worry about 6:00 being too early for a large majority of everybody to be here. I think some people probably go home and eat. I've never experienced that in my life.
I know.
Being here at 6:00, I don't know. I mean, I, I think my favorite would be 6:30.
I can do that.
30 minutes is 30 minutes, folks.
Yeah.
Okay. So the recommendation will be to, to, or the, yeah, the recommendation will be to have the board meetings on the third Tuesday of the month, starting at 6:30. Okay?
And then that one in September will be 6:15?
It would be, yeah, that'll have to change the budget hearing. They'll have to change to 6:15, that's correct.
Okay.
All right.
Motion.
We've got a recommendation. Do we have a motion there? Second? All in favor? What was said over there?
Please do. That's what I thought, but I was going to pick.
All right. Thank you. The approval of prevailing wage rate ordinance, which is enclosure number three in your packet?
This is a yearly action item, and as I've said before, I'm unsure what would happen if you do not pass this, because I'm pretty sure we're required by law to pay it. I don't really want to find out what procedures I need to go through, so the recommendation's for you to pass the prevailing wage ordinance.
So we've got a recommendation from administration to approve the prevailing wage rate ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carries. The approval of the fiscal depositories.
Again, that's a yearly item. You've got the four places listed. Those are the same as the last year, aren't they, Jan?
I think we took one off because it was competitive, but yes, these are the ones we actually use.
So the recommendation's to approve them as presented?
We have a recommendation for the fiscal depositories. We have a motion.
Micro motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to approve the sub-treasurers. Kim Kilpatrick at the high school, Kim Grammer. Need to approve the copy paper bid, which is enclosure number four.
The long story short is Veritiv got the lowest bid. Their paper seems to be adequate by our copy company, who does look at it. Dr. Corley did ask a question coming in about the, what was it, 3,400 versus 3,800, and I said, we looked at it per ream, because when we asked for a truckload, some of the companies had different sized trucks.
Right, and the 8,400 reams was more common for the truckload. But even given the individual price, the one that didn't give us, I guess I adjusted that for everything, but one of them didn't give us, I think that might have been paper 101 didn't give us the, a different cost, so. But it is funny that the total truckload cost at 8,400 reams was $9.40 different between the lowest and the next lowest bidder. $9.40 for a truckload of paper, so very competitive.
So we'd like to go with Veritiv and save that $9.40.
All right, so the recommendation is to award the copy paper bid to Veritiv. And a second?
Hi.
All right, Nancy, will you roll that, please?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? Yes. Mrs. James? Yes. Mr. Beavers? Yes. Dr. Corley? Yes. Mr. Roney?
Yes. We need to approve the dairy products bid.
And I believe this, the long and short of it is, it stays with Prairie Farms. I mean, Georgia and Nancy were back and forth today analyzing it. Do you have a...
It will go to Prairie Farms.
We're going to Prairie Farms.
From Chester Dairies.
So it's moving.
We've flipped back and forth over years.
We go back and forth, it seems, so.
But they're, it's, they were exactly the same cost for the 1% of the skim white. You don't like differences in chocolate, strawberry skim, so they also are pretty, pretty close.
So the recommendation's Prairie Farms, correct?
Correct.
All right, we've got a recommendation to award it to Prairie Farms. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Mr. Corley, we have a second?
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James? Yes. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr? Yes. Mr. Hungy?
Yes. All right, we need to approve the inter-agency working agreement, Child and Family Connections, number 24.
Jan, this is one of those yearly things, and provided that they have money to serve our childrens, we should keep that door open. So the recommendation's to approve the inter-agency agreement with Child and Family Connections.
All right, we have a recommendation to approve the agreement. Do we have a motion?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. You going to roll that?
No.
Voice. All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need to prove, to approve the inter-agency co-op agreement, migrant education head start.
Again, this is one of those yearly agreements. I believe this is the first summer, did we have them last summer? Tony's on any... We had them last summer?
Migrants?
No, so this is the second year we've been without the migrants over the summer?
Yeah, yeah, we had them a couple years ago.
We've had them for summer school before, and we have it for the last two years, but our recommendation is to approve this inter-agency agreement, so that when they get their funds, they can, we can work with them.
All right, so the recommendation is to approve the inter-agency co-op agreement for migrant education. Do we have a motion from the board? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution to transfer working cash interest to the education fund.
One of those yearly, end-of-year action items. Recommendation is to move the interest into the F Fund.
How much is that? It's dollars, I know.
$3,5,000. I mean, it's not, it's not a ton of money. The interest occurs pretty slowly, based on the interest rates. But we actually roll it every month, and then, just as, you know, to make it formal, as an elementary school code requires, we ask it in the year for that permission.
All right, so we've got a recommendation to transfer the working cash interest to the education fund. Do we have a motion from the board?
Micro motion.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the resolution to transfer funds from the operations and maintenance fund to the debt service fund.
Again, another yearly action. When we have our lease agreements, we have to levy that money in the O and M.
Yes, we levy it in the O and M, but we have to actually pay the payments for the lease purchase agreements through debt service, so we have to transfer this debt in order to account for it correctly.
So we have a recommendation from administration to transfer funds from the operations and maintenance to the debt service. Do we have a motion from the board?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carries.